Now declare this meeting of the Galt City Council duly open for the transaction of business. Donna, would you please conduct the roll call?
Haynes.
Here.
Haynes.
Here.
Claire.
Here.
Raboy.
Here.
Meredith.
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I'd like to ask you to stand for a moment of silent prayer, followed by the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to our city attorney to report on any reportable items from our closed session meeting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. In closed sessions tonight, the council discussed conference of legal counsel existing litigation, assuming the Community Services District versus City and Galt Redevelopment Agency, and there was no reportable action. Also discussed conference of labor negotiator regarding Galt Public Service Unit, no reportable action. Conference of legal counsel anticipated litigation, one potential case, no reportable action. Under conference of legal counsel anticipated litigation, the council did give authorization this evening to initiate civil litigation against the group Citizens for Yes on the Recall, Recall Andrew Meredith and Donald Haynes, which is a primary formed ballot measure committee, and the substance of litigation is failure to comply with the city's campaign contribution ordinance, Municipal Code Section 2.54.
Thank you. Agenda approval additions and/or deletions, council? I have mine.
If we could move up under my comment, the discussion about city soccer. I think we have some people here that would like to speak.
Okay. Can we move that before presentations? Is that okay with council?
It's okay with me.
Okay.
Anything from staff?
I wanted to move my fire sprinkler item to communications.
All right, that takes us to public comments.
The video statement. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and Shore West Cable system. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday at 9:00 a.m. A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record. Public comment. Under Government Code Section 549, 54.3, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt city limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker.
For informational purposes, Mrs. Sludy is filling in tonight for Mrs. Aguirre, who is out ill. She's going to be our fill-in city clerk for the evening.
First speaker, Jerry Stribling.
Hello. Good evening. My name's Jerry Stribling, lifelong resident of Galt. I live in the county, 300 feet out of the city limits of Galt. I've lived here all my life. And I've been reading the Galt paper rather frequently, and I'm getting really fed up with the distortion and stuff that's going in on there, on these campaign funds and stuff. I feel we're letting big business come in here in the small town and try to buy the politicians. I see right now, AKA Family Trust Limited Partnership, which is part of Delta Green, I believe, Chiang Mai Dodge, 49 percent, and Mike Guthridge, I believe it's 51 percent, is putting a lot of money into our campaign, trying to sway people. And they're turning around, coming back. I would guess, before this is all said and done, you'd be looking at forty, fifty thousand dollars at least into recalling two people that I'm rather proud to know. They have fought to keep this town with not a control, but a managed growth. Right now, big business would like to come in and make this town 70,000 people if they can. We have sewer system that's out there set up for 70,000 people. It was put in in 1990. And with that, all they needed is another stir, and they needed more room for affluent water. Right now, we have Delta Green, which is trying to put in, coming back, trying to put in their little housing development west of Galt. And with that, you will box a city sewer plant in. You will ruin the control for the city of Galt and their destination of what goes on. I keep reading in these little flyers they put in, they talk about 2,000 feet away from the headway. That's 30 feet from the city of Galt Sewer Wastewater Treatment Plant property. Thirty feet. Actually, borders offense. They're misleading the public. I'm really getting sick and tired of it. If you take in here with Delta Green, you will have lawsuits against you, the city of Galt. You'll have at least five different people, nature groups, environmentalists, will sue the city of Galt if Delta Green goes in. The rate payers are gonna pay it. The public's gonna pay it. It's gonna come out of our pocket. You have a very good general plan coming in right now that needs to be passed. With that, on the east side, you're gonna put light industrial. These people are only gonna be there eight to 10 hours a day. Perfect. They're not gonna be there 24 hours a day, and if they smell some foul odor, they'll call somebody. Air Quality Control Board, wastewater treatment, who knows who they're gonna call? They'll be on the phone 24 hours a day just about, 'cause they're mad. You're placing the piece of ground that's gonna block the future of Galt in, if Delta Green goes in. The amount of money that's being spent, I don't like. I can't go out here and spend over ninety-nine dollars for any of you people to have my views posted and support my candidate. How in the world are you letting them spend here's a seventeen thousand dollars right now? This is totally wrong. It's crooked. What amounts do, far as, I mean, this is my opinion. I have to say that so I don't get sued. But this is my opinion. And it's a lot of people in Galt's opinion, too.
Mr. Stribling, you'll have to wrap it up.
I'll wrap it up quick. On wastewater treatment plants, you have Lodi, you have Woodland, you have Lincoln, you got Roseville. All of them have a buffer around their sewer plant. There's no reason Galt, with good planning, can't have a buffer zone. I wish to thank you. And I do support our candidates.
Woody.
Well, I just wanna bring a couple of things up. I don't know if you know it or not, industrial parks down to 60 percent. Everybody's moved out. The last vendors that was in there moved out the first of last month. That was a T-shirt manufacturer and myself. We went to Grantline and Ninety-Nine. Uh, what else I got here? Oh, we were out campaigning for two weeks. Elections don't look good for R. Elections don't look good for Tim. Randy Salton, and everybody else had a whole bunch. And I think that's all. I had a whole bunch of stuff, and I crossed a lot of it out. Very short.
All right. Thank you.
Woody? When you say "we were out campaigning," who do you mean by "we"?
Who said that?
Me. Right here. You said "we were out campaigning."
There was forty of us.
Who was it?
Part of my employees and other people from Galt. We wanted to see how Measure R was going and who they liked as candidates.
Okay. Thank you.
We just asked them questions.
Al Baldwin.
Let's liven this place up a little bit here. Al Baldwin, the concerned citizen of Galt, a community of character, and definitely we have some of that, but we're lacking a lot of other things. I'm here tonight wearing my magic button. It's for Measure R. Now, you're gonna hear a lot maybe negative, a lot of positive for it. Doesn't make any difference. Measure R is out there, and it's on the ballot. I was on it since the beginning, and I still support it. I'd like to read you one little thing that's in the B real quick. More than 150 off-duty Sacramento police officers have packed the city council chambers to hear the council give their take on a series of drastic cuts implemented by the police department. Police Chief Rick Brazel said Friday he had implemented service reductions aimed at filling his department's budget shortfall. The cutbacks, he said, will lead to longer wait times for 9/11 calls to be answered, fewer serious crimes handled by detectives after hours, and fewer police patrols. What it's saying here is they have a need, okay? And I'm not saying that we're going to cut ours down because, according to our city manager, our budget is set, and we have plenty of money to keep us going. But I am saying there's a time that can come in the next two years or more, the way the economy looks right now, it's not gonna happen overnight, that there could be a chance that maybe the budget will have to be revised. If we don't put Measure R in, on 50 cents, people would pay on every hundred dollars they spend in Galt, we would at least have a backup, once they fill what they can fill, so that we can fill it. It will help the city. It will bail us out. You know, people say, "I don't wanna pay taxes." You know, "I'm paying enough taxes." We don't get all the taxes that we pay. We don't get, we pay a certain amount of taxes, we only get a certain amount back. We don't get the whole thing back. What's nice about Measure R is we get it all back. Everything we spend, the 50 cents on every hundred dollars, we get back in Galt. And it goes towards public safety, police. And definitely, it's gonna be a needed, very much needed in the future, especially with the foreclosures that are going on, the businesses that are going out. Crime is on the upswing. We have a great chief in this town that's trying to keep it level, but it's becoming harder and harder. And as time goes on with the economic situation the way it is, it's gonna be a challenge. Measure R is our bailout. If you don't, it has to be two-thirds of the public here that vote for this. The city cannot use it for anything else. They can't take it for wastewater. They can't take it for water meters. They can't take it for anything. It's gotta go to police. There's a lock on that thing, and there'll be an oversight committee to watch it. And hands will be slapped if they try, and I mean big time. So, it's a win-win for our city. The taxes will stay in Galt, not be split up, and percentages here, percentages there. It will stay in Galt and used for police safety. Now, since I said that, and that's positive, believe me, that's very positive. Jerry Stribling was up here, and I couldn't help but make a comment on one thing he said. The wastewater treatment plant smells. It stinks. You wouldn't want a house built next to it. Whether you're for this Delta Green thing or not, doesn't matter. But that statement, I looked into it. I called Greg Halliday's office. I talked to him. I asked him, "Does it stink within 50 feet of that sewer plant?" And he said, "No." Now, I'm saying this right in front of him, so there's no doubt that it has. It doesn't smell anywhere close to what he is saying. It's a scare tactic. Not that I'm for this, don't get me wrong, please don't get me wrong. I'm just saying that's one statement that I wanna clear up right now. It doesn't stink like he's saying. And the other stuff, you guys can debate, 'cause that's up to you. You know, I don't have to get involved in that one. But nevertheless, Measure R, yes for Measure R. Did anyone said yes? Yes for Measure R. Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Dan Jimenez.
Dan Jimenez, and I live in the city of Galt. I'm gonna read my comments. In a few weeks, the election for city council will come to a close, and we will know the results then. So tonight, I wanna share some of my thoughts. I have paid close attention to what each candidate and incumbents have stated in the papers, and I have watched them on cable TV and the answers they gave when they were doing the so-called debate. After that, I sat down and I analyzed all this information. Now, I can honestly say, you were all thrown a bunch of softballs to hit. Let me repeat that. A bunch of softballs to hit. However, to be honest, through no fault of the candidates or the incumbents, they answered the questions that were put to them, so it wasn't their fault. However, I didn't learn anything new that I didn't know before. Some of the questions that were asked were, "How do you feel about the general plan? The sphere of influence?" Well, I already knew how they felt about it. Some of them liked it, some of them didn't, because their buddies were left out. I didn't learn anything new from that question that was put to them. Next question. Do you support Measure R? I already knew what the answer was gonna be. They all support Measure R. So, did I learn anything from that? No. Next question. Do you support the recall? They all said they did not support the recall. However, a lot of us here tonight know differently. So, I didn't learn anything new from that question. Next question. How do you feel about managed growth, smart growth, or the retail development plan? Again, I knew that some of them didn't like it, because Delta Greens was left out, and some of them liked it. Again, what did I learn? Nothing. So, I won't bore you, because it went on like that. In my opinion, the hard questions were never asked. Questions like, in these tough economic times, what do you think needs to be done to keep the city solvent? In what areas do you see cities, the cities spending money needlessly? And what would you do to correct it? Would you be willing to freeze all wages if need be? Or at the very least, take a very hard look at how they're administered? You know that this council is divided on a lot of major issues. What would you do to bring cohesiveness to the group? Would you consider sitting down with the city manager and asking him, "Is there any way to make a staff more productive, so that outside services and consultants are not always needed"? Continued utility increases are very unpopular. Do you have any ideas on how to bring relief to seniors on limited income? These are some of the issues that will be facing this council in the months and the years to come. When the new council is formed in January, they have to remember they are the stewards of this town. That doesn't give them a license to push their own personal agendas or agendas of those who want to benefit by their association with them. This council is only as good as we're gonna let it be. So, it's up to us to hold the feet to the fire. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Slaughterback.
John Slaughterback, I'm living in the city of Galt. Is this mic working? Living in the city of Galt. This election, the voters will decide the destiny of our city. City council candidates attended the forum. Galt's general plan update, nearly six years in the making, was the next subject to be discussed. Salton said he supports the current general plan update. George Romano said he supports, wants to get the job done and would approve of the update proposed. Kelly Keighley agreed, saying this update is more in line with SECOC blueprint for the region. The city has a general plan ready to be implemented with a new council. Do you, the citizens of Galt, want to spend your money to restart a general plan all over again, which would also extend the implementation of the general plan for another three years? If you believe the city needs to approve of a general plan update, then you need to vote for candidates who said they would approve of the general plan if elected. These candidates are Tim Raboy incumbent, George Romano, Rick Salton, Kelly Keighley. These four candidates said they would approve of the general plan update. The general plan has been six years in the making. We need to get this general plan over with once and for all and stop special interests from changing its course. Here in the schedule for tonight, we have on D3, ninety-eight thousand dollars for the general plan update. That's just part of it. Do we just continually keep spending the city's money to redo this general plan? We need people in this council that will approve of this general plan update and not continually bring it back and redo it every time. It's your money. And for them to be able to make these kind of decisions isn't right. I would like to say a few words to the Spanish-speaking community tonight. Latino Americanos, is muy importante reelejir dos miembros al consejo municipal que representara todos todas las personas. Tim Raboy is una persona ese dinero no puede comprar. He is un buen hombre. Reelejir Tim Raboy para el aunamiento por favor y gracias por su apoyo. Eto' terminado. Should I repeat that in English? Latin Americans, it is very important to reelect two members to the city council that represent all of the peoples. Tim Raboy is a person that money cannot buy. He is a good person, a good man. Reelect Tim Raboy for city council, please, and thank you for your support. This statement about the wastewater treatment plant, if they build out there, anybody builds out there, there's always gonna be complaints. You can, even if you take the smell off the table, people are gonna complain about that no matter what, and the people that's gonna pay for it are the citizens of Galt. We keep talking like this is not gonna hurt this wastewater plant. It's gonna hurt the wastewater plant. And to say, keep bringing this up, that it's not gonna do nothing, and we put waste right out there next to the fence line, it's ridiculous. You know, I hope that the citizens of Galt realize this and elect people that will do what's best for the city and yourselves. It, to do otherwise, it just don't make sense. And I hope that the citizens realize that we need to put people up here that will approve this general plan and get it over with and save us some money. Like I said, we got ninety-eight thousand dollars here right now that they're gonna have to approve tonight. We need to put a stop to this and get on with the city's business of running this city. Thank you.
Mr. Slaughterback, I wanted to correct you. At the forum, of all of the candidates were there. Every one of them said they wanted the general plan to move forward. No one said they wanted...
Well, in the paper, it didn't say that.
Well, I was there, and I was one of the candidates, and I heard everybody say they wanted it to move forward. I don't know where you got your information.
Well, it's in the paper, it's where I got my information.
Well, you should've been there.
You need to look at the paper.
No, you should've been at the forum.
No, it's in the paper. I mean, you know, if it says it in the paper, that's what I intend it. That's the way it is. You can't just say now that I'm not saying it right. The paper's saying that. It's not me.
Thank you, Mr. Slaughterback.
Tom Santalan.
Who wants to wait for the item? Any further public comment?
Yeah. Sandy Brack. Oh, no, she wants when 404 Sixth Street comes up. And last one is Kathleen Amos, but you wanna wait for the soccer proposal? Okay. Sorry.
Is there any general public comment? You wanna make your comments now? Do you gotta run, or? Okay. It is gonna be heard a little later. Okay. That will move to the information consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Pro five zero. Next up, we have the city soccer program, and I'll turn the microphone over to Councilwoman Barbara Payne.
Okay. This was brought about strictly as an informational item. During the past week, I had a citizen who has two sons in the soccer program just ask the question why we don't have a city-sponsored soccer program. I guess she has to drive to Manteca for her level of soccer for her sons. And I said, "You know, I don't know the answer, but I'll ask Boyce, and he can give us that information. And after that, if you still have questions, you can take it to the Commission on Parks and Recs." So, this is meant just to be, give some history, some reason why we have the program that we have. It's not meant to change anything.
For council's information and the audience, the soccer program is coordinated and provided by County Line Soccer. They've been in existence for over 25 years here in the community. In fact, Ms. Moody, I think, was on the board years ago. But I feel that they run a very quality program. They have over 62 teams presently in this season. They also have competitive teams that compete against other communities in Northern California. And I don't think it's appropriate for the city to duplicate services as the bottom line in that capacity, 'cause again, I think they do a quality program here in the community and the outside area.
Boyce, what's the number of volunteers they have? When I was on Parks and Recs, I vaguely remember a discussion somewhere on 80 to 100, or am I off on that?
Uh, not really, if you count your volunteer coaches. Right here's 62 with assistants, so. And then also their board, which they have a coaching coordinator, tournament coordinator, competitive coordinator, so on and so forth. So, they probably deal with over, approximately 150 volunteers, I would assume.
Okay. They've always had a good reputation, and I know they've always been well-liked, so they've done an excellent job.
And I'd just like to point out, the city does provide in-kind services for them, facilities for their soccer games and practices.
And I would add one thing. Boyce has prepared a report that is pretty extensive as to the program, and it's available to anyone that would like to have a copy. That's it. It was just information.
Thank you.
Kathleen Amos.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kathleen Amos, and I live in the city. I'm also the chair of the Parks and Rec Commission, and I primarily wanted to let the public know that if there is a concern about any kind of recreational activity that either is offered or is not offered by the city, the Parks and Rec Commission is there to answer questions and to take input. answer questions and to take input from the public. So those meetings are the second Wednesday of each month ordinarily at seven P.M. So for future reference, if there, you know, that would be a place that I would like people to be referred to if they do have concerns or questions about how any recreational program is run within the city. I personally coached soccer when my son was eight years old here under County Line Youth Soccer. And we do have, I think we have a great soccer program in this town. We have great participation by the public in the soccer program. And I'm also aware that we currently have a vacancy that we are planning not to replace in the Recreation Department in order to make budget this year. That's one of the cost-cutting measures that the Recreation Department has made. The trend, from what I understand, on being on the Parks and Rec Commission for the last four years, the trend right now with limited funds and budgetary considerations is against city sponsorship for programs. But I think Boyce does an excellent job of working with the leadership of any kind of sport when it comes to working with them to help provide facilities, and the city works cooperatively. In that way, we, the city is able to extend facilities and availability for more students because we aren't, the city isn't actually paying for all those programs, but we are providing facilities and working with people, whether it's baseball, soccer, swimming, football, or whatever. We work with all the other organizations in town to try to provide those, and I think Boyce does an excellent job of that. So I just want to point that out for the public's sake and remind them of that. So anyway, if there is, are there any questions or concerns in the future, I would ask that people come to the Parks and Rec Commission first and talk to Boyce Jeffries, the Director of Parks and Rec, too, because, you know, we always, we try to work with people and help them find a place for their children in the community where they can plug into the recreational activities in town. And just briefly, this is not directly on city, on point with the city issues, the Parks and Rec issues. But I just want to thank the Galt Chamber for hosting the community forum on October eighth, two thousand and eight, at the Chabola Center, and thank the Galt Herald for reporting it carefully to the public so the public had all the information they could have about the candidates this year in the city. Thank you.
Kathleen, for you, ladies.
Thank you.
I was just wondering, how are we getting the word out to the people about the Parks and Recs Commission so that they do know who to go to? In fact, she, I'm giving her this report, and then if she has any questions, she will come. But I'm wondering, is there some way that we need to be advertising more that we have this Parks and Recs Commission so people will know who to go to?
Well, it is, it is listed on every city council agenda at the end of each agenda. It's also, I think, on the city website. All of the meetings for all the city offices are, all the commissions are listed on the website. So if people go to the city website, they can find that information.
Maybe we could do something in our newsletter to also advertise.
I think they generally are in the newsletter. Depends, yeah, I think the meetings for all the, all the city commissions and all the city meetings are listed in the newsletter. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Right, that takes us under presentations. Item number one is the Certificate of Recognition for Beautification Committee Member Ashley Thompson.
Okay. If Ashley and Evelyn Brown would come to the podium. More, excuse me. Sorry. Evelyn is chairman of the Galt Beautification Committee. Excuse me, I'm not Denver, but you're in. Vice Chair, excuse me, and she wants to recognize one of our junior beautification committee members, and we're very proud of her. So I'm going to let you make the award and tell everybody about Ashley.
Tonight, the Beautification Committee would like to recognize Ashley Thompson for her participation, for working with our committee at community events. Ashley's been a volunteer for the last two years with the Beautification Committee. She takes pride in helping and engaging others in our beautification projects such as planting flowers, litter pickup, reporting graffiti, using the hotline. The Beautification Committee members appreciate Ashley's care and concern in keeping Galt clean and safe. We hope she will continue working with us and beautifying Galt. The Galt Beautification is pleased to present Ashley with the first Youth Volunteer Award. And, what's this say, Ashley? It's a certificate of recognition acknowledging your achievement and contribution as a junior volunteer for the Galt Beautification Committee. Your enthusiastic efforts have been greatly appreciated, and the council and Beautification Committee wish to recognize the time and energy you have given to the beautification of the community. We wish you success in the future. Thank you very much.
Ashley, do you want to say a few words? I know it's intimidating, but there's probably only twenty or thirty people that actually watch this on television, so.
Um.
And I'm one of them, so I narrow it down to twenty-nine.
I'd like to thank everybody. I'm glad to work, to help the community, and I'd like to thank Evelyn for helping me get involved, and my brother for support.
Well, thank you for all the work that you're doing for the city, Ashley. We appreciate it. Can you come up so everyone can hear you, Evelyn?
I've got to mention, she's a student here in Galt at McCaffrey Middle School. So proud of you.
I could make one comment.
Sure.
Evelyn, while you're here, and I think you've already noticed, but I had a chance to go by the Galt Herald today and tell David congratulations on the improvements they've made, and so I hope the Beautification Committee also makes some note or congratulations to them. They've completed their facilities improvement, and the new parking area, and the landscaping, and everything else, and it really looks, at the Galt Herald, David Herberger, I think he said you already had congratulated him as well, so. Yeah, very nice. Thank you.
Item number two under presentations is our federal lobbyist presentation, and a lot of you don't know him because we don't see him quite as often as we see other members of the extended community. But I'd like to introduce Mr. Pete Eviich. He works for Van Skonik Associates. He's going to give us an update on some of the work that he's been doing at the federal level on behalf of the city of Galt.
Well, thank you, Mayor Meredith, and Vice Mayor Haynes, and council members. We, it was an opportunity to speak with you before you tonight. As the mayor said, my name is Pete Eviich, and I'm with Van Skonik Associates, a federal government relations firm located in Washington, D.C. Our firm has had the pleasure of representing the city's interest in Washington, D.C. for almost four years. And while I have been the city's primary point of contact, Laura Morgan of our firm is also an instrumental member of our team. Laura had planned to be here tonight, but due to a family emergency, she unfortunately was unable to make it. Since the beginning of our relationship with the city, we have primarily focused our efforts on helping to obtain federal funds for some of the city's priority projects. We are pleased that there have been some federal funding successes during this time. In the two thousand and five multi-year transportation reauthorization bill, we assisted the city in securing two-point-four million dollars for the Central Galt State Route Ninety-Nine interchange project. Additionally, in this year's House Interior Appropriations Measure, Representative Dan Lundgren championed a two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar congressionally-directed grant for the wastewater treatment plant. But since the FY-oh-nine federal budget process has not yet been finalized, we are still waiting the final outcome on that grant. So I'll provide a quick recap of what occurred and share with you the prevailing thinking as to when and how that FY-oh-nine federal process will be completed. Unfortunately, the budget, congressional budget and appropriations process hit some major roadblocks this year. The House of Representatives Appropriations Committee suffered a significant meltdown during the committee process due to the heightened politics of presidential election year, coupled with intense bipartisan disagreements on key electoral issues such as domestic oil drilling. While the Senate was able to pass all thirteen appropriations bills out of the Senate Appropriations Committee, neither body was able to pass any appropriations bills out of their respective floors of Congress. As a result, Congress passed a continuing resolution until March of two thousand and nine. This bill will keep the federal, will keep all federal domestic programs funded at FY-2008 levels. So what does this mean for the status of the FY-oh-nine appropriations bills and specifically the city's pending grant? We believe there are two different possible scenarios that could happen depending on the outcome of the presidential election. If Senator Obama is elected, Congress will likely not come back into session in a lame duck in November to address these pending appropriations bills, as Congress has traditionally done in the past when it's been in this situation. But we'd rather wait until after a would-be Obama administration is in place to pass these measures. Some speculate that if Senator Kane is elected, Senator McCain is elected, Congress will consider taking up the FY-oh-nine bill in a November or December lame duck session, with the thinking being that this Congress would have just as much, if not more, success in dealing with a Bush administration as they would a McCain administration in this appropriations budget process. So if this scenario plays out, Congress will try and work out a deal with President Bush to pass the appropriations bills before a would-be McCain administration is in place. But however, under either scenario, we are hopeful that funds for the city's wastewater treatment facility will be included in the final bill. We will, of course, continue to work with the city's congressional delegation to ensure that the funding for the wastewater treatment plant remains. I also want to take a few minutes to discuss future federal funding opportunities for the city as we move forward into the next Congress. Next year, and in the next Congress, there will be consideration of the massive multi-year transportation reauthorization bill. The existing bill is set to expire at the end of two thousand and nine. As I mentioned earlier, we were successful in securing money for the city in the two thousand and five bill. That bill contained a total of two-hundred-and-eighty-six billion dollars for funding for highway and transit programs and projects. Of that amount, twenty-five billion dollars was divided up amongst over sixty-four-hundred specific line item projects. We strongly believe that this upcoming reauthorization bill presents a great opportunity for federal funding for the city. Furthermore, the state of California will be well-positioned in this upcoming transportation bill. Senator Barbara Bautzer will continue to chair the Senate Environment and Public Works Committee. This committee has primary jurisdiction over the new transportation reauthorization bill in the Senate. Senator Bautzer has stated repeatedly that one of the reasons she wanted to remain in the Senate was so she can chair this committee, which oversees the highway bill, and help bring more transportation dollars back to California. Another potential opportunity for the city to receive federal funding is the new economic stimulus package. Last week, the Democrat leadership in the House of Representatives announced plans for a new economic stimulus package aimed at aiding states, extending unemployment insurance benefits, and investing in transportation and infrastructure. The Speaker of the House of Representatives has stated that she may call a lame duck session of Congress back after the November election to address this new stimulus package. If both bodies of Congress are able to come to a consensus on a bill, we believe this may be another possible source of federal funds for the city. So this concludes my remarks, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have. And thank you again for the opportunity to be here tonight, and it's been a pleasure to work on behalf of the city in Washington, D.C.
Councilman Claire, I think the addition of a federal lobbyist originally was kind of coming from your push, is that correct? I think it, I think what the community misses in regards to our federal lobbyists is the fact that it would be extremely expensive for the city of Galt to send staff members to Washington when issues came up that we needed to be addressed. I think Mr. Eviich has certainly exceeded everyone's expectations. We've gotten more than we ever expected out of his services, and it's been a true benefit to the community that we've been able to retain his services. So I think Darryl had a great idea when he brought this forward, and it's paid great dividends for the city of Galt.
Yeah, if I could just comment, and really Ted found Mr. Eviich, or Mr. Eviich found us, and that through a series of proposals from a group of firms, Ted had determined Mr. Eviich would be the best pick as a person and as a firm, as an organization, and I think it's proven. Had the pleasure of working with Pete for four years, and because of my business travel, I'm in Washington, D.C. six to eight times a year, so I'm able to meet with him on city issues without the cost to the city of those trips, because I'm already there on my business. And Pete and his firm have been very, very aggressive in representing us, and I've had the pleasure, and I know, I think the full council has had the pleasure of meeting with him since he was here, and many of you have had a chance to meet with him in Washington, D.C., with Senator Feinstein and others. And so we do appreciate the work you're doing, and another couple million dollars would be great.
And we're definitely going to be trying to make that a reality, so we appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman Claire, for your comments, and as I had mentioned, we appreciate the opportunity to be a representative back in Washington, D.C., and look forward to future successes. Now, this is a requirement. Every city council meeting, if you're here for the first time, Mr. Baldwin has to take the picture.
Oh, okay. That's fine.
Smile.
Nice.
Let me make a comment about Pete. He's got a nice suit and a nice tie, but he's a very down-to-earth individual. He's got four young children. He knows what it's like to struggle for money, and he knows how important these things are to the city, and he has a high ethical standard. And that's the reason that we look, that we chose him, and he's not disappointed us. And a lot of times, we'll call just for general information, he has a pretty good take on what's happening in Washington. He stays on top of it, and we're really happy that he's provided the service to the city. Not only that, he's been very reasonable. For a city our size to have a lobbyist, a lot of people pay a lot more money than we do and get a lot less service, and we're really happy with what he's done for us to date.
And I will mention in front of Pete and the council, I think I told some of the council, but Congressman Lundgren's staff recently complimented Pete, in their words, as one of their favorite people to work with, and that's a good thing to have from your congressman's staff. So to you, congratulations for their view of you, not just ours. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming out. The next item under presentations is the Sustainable Energy Assessment District. Many of you know, this was originally presented back in September for council review and the community's review. And what I'm presenting tonight is a finalized version of the program, and I'll explain towards the end of the presentation what I'm looking for from council tonight. See if we can get the computer screen to work there. Once Donna gets the lights turned on a little bit, we'll go ahead and get started. We get the ones up in the front turned on a little bit, too? Thank you, Ted. Okay. I'm going to give you a little background for those of you in the audience that weren't here when this was presented back in September. In response to requests from homeowners to create a citywide program to encourage energy efficiency, Galt began looking for ways to help homeowners increase their energy efficiency and reduce their carbon footprint. At around the same time, the city of Berkeley, California, began constructing a financing district for solar panel installations that would pay for the overall cost, and it would receive reimbursement through an additional property tax line item. Vice Mayor Haynes and I attended a local government commission dinner where a representative from the city of Berkeley discussed the overall concept of their program. After the presentation, I decided to start drafting a similar- After the presentation, I decided to start drafting a similar program for the city of Galt. When drafting the initial program, I tried to address the fact that many homeowners in the community would be unable to participate in a solar program due to overall costs, shading concerns, roof structure, or other intangibles. I decided that in order to get the most substantial participation, my program would have to include solar energy upgrades and standard energy efficiency upgrades. In addition, I felt it was important to identify the needs for new construction to participate in a community carbon reduction plan by building greener than they've ever built before. Therefore, I initially crafted a program that included three major component sections. The first was a solar panel installation financing program. The second portion was the energy efficiency financing program. And the third was a new construction solar mandate, which would mandate a certain percentage of all residential developments to build to SMUD Solar Smart Home standards. As I said, in September, I have presented this initial draft to council in an attempt to receive their feedback as well as feedback from the community that could be addressed in a final draft document. Initial feedback from council and the community indicated that the voluntary component of the program was extremely popular. Concerns were voiced, however, over the administration costs of the program and that potentially becoming a burden to the city. Also, some residents wondered if the overall costs associated with solar installation could be recouped through energy savings. Concerns were also voiced by council and the Building Industry Association in regards to the mandate on new construction that was included in the original program. In response to all feedback received, I have made changes to the initial program. The changes will be highlighted in the following slides. My original proposal called for the city of Galt to administer all aspects of the program. I am now recommending that council direct staff to begin discussions with renewable funding to administer the entire Galt plan. Renewable funding is a new corporation that has just started. It has a lot of partners that participated in the creation of the Berkeley Financing District. They've created all of the legal documentation in the city of Berkeley and would be in a great position to do the same for the city of Galt. The original program called for 20% of every future residential development to be built in accordance with the SMUD Solar Smart Home program. I discussed this at the last meeting. After speaking with SMUD and speaking with some of our local developers, it was highlighted that identifying 20% of the housing stock inside of each individual residential development to build to SMUD Solar Smart Home program would be difficult, it would be extremely expensive, and it would eliminate the possibility of being included in many of the positive aspects of SMUD Solar Smart Home program, which include being highlighted in their community newsletter that they send out with their monthly utility statements. Therefore, I am now recommending that 20% of all residential developments be 100% SMUD Solar Smart. And the difference there is essentially, I'm asking council to set a precedent and say that two out of every 10 residential developments that are approved by the city of Galt be 100% SMUD Solar Smart. And as I mentioned before, what the developers benefit from this, they get the free advertising of being included in SMUD's utility statements that will highlight their program. I'm also recommending that the city of Galt speed up the permitting process and all of the paperwork processes for all of the developments to choose to participate in this program. Now, right now, when the housing industry is extremely slow, there's not a big benefit to that. But if you go back five years ago when construction was extremely high, being moved to the front of the list was extremely beneficial to the developer. My original presentation suggested that the city of Galt consider adopting a document to clearly define what energy efficiency upgrades would qualify for program inclusion. I am now recommending that we use the Build It Green Remodeling Guidelines, which I've included in the packet, as a reference for eligibility. Now, I make the point here that it is just a reference. I'm proposing in my plan that council have ultimate authority over approving eligible upgrades. Now, I'm going to, I'm going to go over the Galt plan again, just so council is clear on exactly what I'm asking for tonight. With the changes outlined in the previous slides, I thought it was important to review the presentation as a whole with the changes, so council is clear on how the program will function when adopted and finalized. The city of Galt is in a unique position to create a groundbreaking program that would put our small city at the forefront of the clean energy movement. Galt is currently completing a general plan update that will decide how Galt will grow over a period ending in 2030. Our growth plans cost of the addition of 1,540 acres of residential development that will, in turn, bring 7,289 new housing units of varying densities of build-out. Expansion and the subsequent increase in Galt's population will result in an increase in our community's overall carbon footprint. In order to offset this carbon increase and limit our impact upon regional air quality issues, Galt needs to find ways to reduce our carbon contribution. My proposal consists of three major components designed to increase energy efficiency and make carbon reductions possible at every home in our community. Part one of the program is the financing of the purchase and installation of photovoltaic power generation systems on existing homes. Part two is the financing of permanent energy efficiency upgrades to existing homes. Part three is requiring 20% of all new residential developments to be built to SMUD Solar Smart Home standards. This is the overall financing plan that is highlighted in the packet. In brief, the first portion is the application period. The city of Galt would open an application period, publicly release this to the community. The application review period would follow for the solar portion and the enhancement portion. That would lead to eligibility approval by council upon staff's recommendations. Then you would have a bid period, a bonding period, the construction period, and the repayment period. Now, all of these last four would be completely diverted to renewable funding if they were chosen by the city of Galt to participate in administering the plan. This was the repayment period that I had originally suggested. Dollar totals from $0 to $4,000 would be repaid over five years. $4,001 to $10,000 would be 10 years. $10,001 to $15,000 would be 15 years. And $15,001 and over would be 20 years. Part one of the program is the solar installation financing portion. Under my plan, single-family homeowners in existing neighborhoods would be eligible to join a newly created financing district on a voluntary basis during a one-month application period every year. After applications were received, a qualified solar surveyor would assess the applicability of a new photovoltaic system on the home. If the home was found to be eligible, the district would proceed with financing the installation. Now, this is just an overall diagram of what your typical solar installation would look like on a home. Part two of the program is the efficiency enhancement financing. While most existing homes would qualify for solar installation based on available roof area and available sunlight criteria, some will not. Galt's existing home inventory includes some homes with roofs that simply cannot support the additional weight of a traditional solar installation. For these homes, Galt should create an additional component as part of its assessment district that finances energy upgrades instead of solar installations. This could provide a way for older, less energy efficient homes to help offset their carbon footprint by making their homes more energy efficient. In order to qualify for financing through the district, homeowners must apply for permanent efficiency upgrades to their homes. Permanent should be characterized as upgrades which would not, under normal circumstances, be readily removable from the home. Examples of qualifying upgrades, now, I'm going to skip through these because we kind of covered them in detail at the last meeting. This is a whole house fan, high energy efficiency air conditioners, tankless or energy efficient water storage heaters, high efficiency toilets, high efficiency windows, and the list could essentially be endless. Part three is the mandate for new construction. In addition to new financing mechanism that would allow current homeowners to finance solar installations and energy enhancements as a way of offsetting our carbon footprint, the city of Galt should also set a standard for energy efficiency in new residential developments. With an influx of new developments looming over the next 10 years, Galt must take action to reduce their impacts on regional air quality and energy demands by taking steps to offset our footprint. To achieve true carbon reduction, I am proposing that the city begin to implement a new requirement on residential development that requires at least 20% of all future developments to be built in accordance with the SMUD Solar Smart Home program. SMUD's program is a unique mix of energy efficiency upgrades and solar technology. This is a home that was built by Lennar Homes, which participated in this program in the city of Rancho Cordova. This kind of gives you an outline of how SMUD's Solar Smart Home program differs from typical Title 24 standards. And this is something that we didn't have in the presentation when it was initially put before council. This is the average Solar Smart customer bill accumulated during the year 2008 from January to July. You can see that in the month of May, the typical utility bill was only $19. Now, that's averaged out over every SMUD Solar Smart Home residential homeowner in SMUD's jurisdiction. This is a comparison of SMUD Solar Smart Home homes versus non-Solar Smart. You can see that in the month of May, the difference was $67 to $19, pretty substantial energy savings. This is the electric bill savings. In January, you had a 41% savings, 43 in February, 56 in March, 62 in April, 72 in May, 69 in July, 69 in June, 58 in July, pretty substantial. If the city of Galt is truly looking at ways to reduce our carbon footprint, you can see what having 20% of our new residential homes built to these standards would do. So with the preceding presentation to council complete, this is what I'm asking of council at this time. Number one, I'm asking that council adopt the presented program, piece by piece, as the preferred City of Galt Sustainable Energy Program. The reason that I'm asking this is when council directs staff, if that's what they choose to do, to meet with renewable funding, it is important that they know the direction that the city of Galt wants to head in before they start drafting language to make the assessment district possible. The second thing that I'm asking is to direct staff, as I just indicated, and myself, to meet with renewable funding to finalize our program and begin implementation. Now, this will be a process that will be completely transparent to the council every time that we reach a point in this process where council can be advised of what's going on or brought together to make decisions on how we proceed forward. That's exactly what we will do. The third portion is to direct planning staff and the city attorney to determine how to carry forward council's commitment to solar inclusion in future residential development. That's something that I'm not exactly sure how we would carry forward, but I'm pretty sure that Kurt and our city attorney could get together and decide how to make that happen. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I'd like to open the floor up to members of the community to come forward and ask any questions, and then I'll ask council to weigh in as well. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
Al Baldwin, and I do applaud Andrew, your concern for our carbon footprint. That's really good. We should all struggle to reduce it in some way. I think a lot of what you're proposing is being done, with the exception of the solar panels, now by a lot of developers. I mean, it's just upgrading every year. It seems like the state, the county, seems to upgrade every year to become more efficient. So I think we're doing some of that right now. The only, there's a couple things you didn't touch, and I'm sure there's going to be a lot of other questions that not only the council will have even after this, if it gets approved, about a lot of things. But one of them, if I bought a house and the average time it takes is about 10 years, a lot of people stay in it, they don't stay in it for lifetime anymore, maybe their kids grow up and they move and things. So let's say after 10 years and you've got this solar house there, who pays for the bill? The new person that buys the house or is it paid off when the house is sold? That's just one question. And also, if I had my house on this side and I'm trying to sell it and the house across the street doesn't have the solar panels on it, and they're very similar, would the new owner be looking at solar panels with, you know, reducing the carbon footprint or would they not want to have it on there and buy the other house? And would that other house probably become maybe less than the solar panel or the solar panel more? It just depends on a lot of that. But I do applaud what your thoughts are on it. I think it's a great energy saving. I don't, you'll still have to pay back the bill even though you're making money off your SMUD after 10, 20 years. So it takes about 10 or 20 years depending to pay it off, one way or another. It's still going to, you're still going to be paying no matter what you save on your SMUD bill or whatever. So they're still going to be paying on it for 20 years, 15, 20 years, whatever you decide. But I would, you know, since the people aren't voting on this and it's a council ordinance that you're probably going to propose, and it's hard for me to say this because I hate to have a lot of government involvement in a lot of the decisions that I have to make. And I would prefer that you leave it up to the developers promote maybe more and if you don't think they can, then I understand, that's why you're doing this. But I'd like to have more choice. That's my own personal opinion and that's the way I think.
With that question, you're referring directly to the new construction.
Right, oh yeah.
But to get back to your original question, the first one, I'm glad you brought that up because that was something we touched on a lot when I first presented this. The way that the financing mechanism would work, if you're a homeowner, you choose to opt into this program during the application period, let's say you put a solar installation on your house. Think after speaking with SMUD, with their additional rebate on top of what the state and the federal government give you, gets you down on average to about $11,000. So let's say you live in your home for five years. That repayment period for $11,000, as outlined in my repayment schedule, would be 15 years. Over 15 years, you would pay back that money in increments on your tax bill. If you move, the next homeowner picks up the tab, they start making the property tax payment. So essentially, the home owns the solar installation, not the resident. So that, the reason that this has been deemed so revolutionary when Berkeley adopted this program was because it overcame the initial cost burden that was the main obstacle for many homeowners to participate in solar programs. So essentially, the home owns it, the resident doesn't. So I think with what developers have indicated all across the Sacramento region, the solar installations on homes has become a very positive selling technique. It's made it possible during this housing decline for developers to still remain active. And I know there's a representative from Spund here tonight, I don't know if she has the number on her, but I think in the last year, over 50% of all residential homes built in Sacramento County were built to SMUD Solar Smart Home standards. So in the city of Galt, we would just be asking for 20, you know, and in the last year, the track record has been over 50%.
What's the average for solar panels to be lived out before you have to start replacing them and maintaining them and things like that?
Well, I think the life of, the life of the solar panels is always increasing. I don't know what the, what the current life expectancy is, but you're right, it is a, it's a resource that is not forever, you know, they eventually do go bad.
I've heard it's 15 to 20, 25, maybe if you push it, years before you may have to start replacing and repairing. And I'm just wondering if you're in it 10 years, 15 years, you sell it, the new homeowner's going to have to pick up that.
Well...
I mean, I'm not trying to argue the point, I'm just saying it's a decision that I think a homeowner should make and not necessarily government, that's all.
Current construction techniques for solar panels exceed 15 years of life expectancy.
But not 20.
But not 20.
Right. Okay, well, no problem, I just wanted to express my feelings and appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Rick Walters, I live in the city of Galt. I'm concerned about the wastewater treatment plant and the energy there. Can you touch on that? I've been pushing for two years for solar for our energy consumption for the city.
Yeah, we touched on this also, I think at the previous meeting, what the Eldorado Irrigation District was able to do with their water treatment plant. I know Greg would love to put solar panels out of our wastewater treatment plant, just like the five of us would. It's just, it's so cost prohibitive right now to do that. I think maybe with the implementation of the program, the city, as I believe it was Mr. Gaethel suggested this before... Mr. Gaethel suggested this before, the city of Galt would set a good precedent by getting involved in this program through financing our own solar installations on a municipal building. Maybe that could spark the community into participating as well, so I think that's something we'll look at.
What I understand is our energy consumption's gonna go through the roof here fairly shortly, so I'm just wondering what the staff has and plans for us to take care of those increased costs. And if we don't do it now, when are we gonna do it? That's my thought. Thank you.
I think that's the smartest thing you guys can do. I have five rentals, a few days ago I bought two more. I think that's super, because then I can keep the rent, keep my payments in, because then my utilities are gonna be lower. But my question is, what about my commercial building downtown? Can we put it on that?
That's something council could consider amending this program to do. You could include it in the commercial industry here in the city of Galt.
Yeah, you need to add the commercial, I think, too. I think that's a great idea. I'd go for that.
Thank you, Woody.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. John Costa of the Building Industry Association. Just again, wanted to follow up on how I spoke two weeks ago with regards to encouraging developments to move forward with Solar Smart Programs rather than mandating those projects, similar to what you're looking at for the current homeowners. You're asking them to voluntarily participate in the program, and we would ask them, during this time period, that they're be given a chance to, rather than mandating projects, encouraging projects to participate. Similar to what you said with respects to SMUD's program, that fifty percent of the development out there has participated, they've seen the investment, and they've chosen to do so. Ultimately, it's the new homeowner that would be paying that fee, or that dollar amount, whatever that dollar amount may come out to, and just like any option that they have, it would be that choice, that homeowner to participate. So we would encourage the council, while looking at this program, to look at, rather than mandating twenty percent, encouraging twenty percent moving forward, coming back at a later date as the rest of this project gets finalized, and looking at whether or not that's happening, and then looking at mandating if that's a choice of this council. We would encourage you to look at encouraging rather than mandating. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm so glad that y'all are here and putting in some good energy instead of bad energy for wrong changes in our community and recalls and such. I'm glad that you're talking about this tonight, I didn't know it, but, because I wanted to talk about my fibs, but if you have a chance to read the National Geographic this month, it talks about solar, and it talks about lighting, and why we all need darkness, and why animals need darkness, and that we're really destroying our communities and our world right now with light, the wrong types of lighting. And so I was hoping I could bring this and ask you guys to look through one, so you can see all the cities in here that, they can see from up in state, how brightly lit they are, and that people don't live well in life, that we do need dark to sleep, and all that, if any of you are like me, pulling the covers over my head at night, because I don't want to see through my curtain windows with light outside. But I think it was a wonderful article in here, and I think solar's great. We have a loan with SMUD right now for dual pane windows on the rental here, and we have solar in our pool, and it works great, so...
Do you have an extra copy of that?
No, but you know what, I have right this one.
Is that the October, is that the October, November? Oh, okay. We'll do, we'll make sure that all five of us have like a week to look at it, and then we'll make sure it gets back to you.
I actually subscribe to it, so I'd be glad to share mine, bring it in.
When you guys make decisions about lighting and stuff, you can make sure that we bring it down, that we're bringing it down, where people can see on the street, and others can see them on the street without shining the light up in another place.
Thank you, thank you. Any other comments by the public? All right, then we'll turn it over to council, and we'll start with Vice Mayor Haynes.
First of all, I want to thank you for this excellent presentation, that was very good. And I have to agree, we need to be doing more to reduce our carbon footprint here in Galt. You know, I don't think there's too much I can say. I think it's all voluntary, except for the, except for the area where the twenty percent requiring new housing. I don't feel that that's unreasonable, I think that is reasonable. I think that there's a good market out there for people who will want it. But in addition to that, I know Mr. Costa's mentioned wanting to put it on there as voluntary with the building industry, and I know that we've been down that road before with another item, such as the sprinklers, and it just didn't work out, unfortunately. And I, sometimes a mandate is what it takes to get some movement in some of these areas. I think twenty percent, like I said, is reasonable. I don't think this is, I don't think it's not possible, and I really strongly feel that there's enough people out there that would probably jump on this, so I'm very much for it, and I think the mayor had done an excellent job in presenting it.
The way I understood it, it would be twenty percent of new projects, like if you had, I don't know, ten new projects, that there would just be twenty percent of those projects that would have to be a hundred percent solar, is that what it was?
Originally, we had talked about having each development isolate twenty percent of their stock and make them SMUD Solar Smart Programs, program homes, but after speaking with SMUD and developers that have participated in the program, that just doesn't make any sense, so...
How would you decide which projects would be required to do it?
Well, that would be up to council's discretion, but I think Mr. Costa touched on a great point. It would be more beneficial for the city to offer incentives to lure twenty percent of developers to participate in this program.
Opposed to mandatory?
Right. As opposed to getting to the last two projects out of ten and being forced into mandating it upon us to developers.
So you would still keep the mandate in, just try to encourage new projects to participate?
Yes.
How would that work?
Well, as it's outlined in the agenda and in the packet, the city of Galt could stand to obtain federal energy efficiency grants and other efficiency grants, and as I've outlined, I really feel that all of this money should go towards helping developers offset fees and costs associated with meeting this mandate. So if we got those efficiency block grant funding contributions or other contributions, it would all be rolled back over to encourage developers to participate.
And in regards to the financing company, would the staff oversee them? I wasn't really sure how that would work either.
Well, the way it would work, the city first program that you saw in the packet, that is basically a program that renewable funding is put together. That program would administer every aspect of it. They would open the application process, they would process the applications, they would create the tax language, they would deal directly with the county to establish the tax line item, and they would administer the billing for that, for that project.
Who would pay for it?
They would pay, it would be rolled over on each individual homeowner. So every cost associated with your application would be put in on your total obligation.
I think that's all my questions. That's you.
Councilman Claire?
Yeah, I wanted to pick up, I'm unclear as to the seed money, I guess I'll call it, but has, I don't know if I know this is in the outer room, or has, well, first off, before I even get into that, what you're trying to do is great, and obviously you put a lot of work into it. Has, have they looked at, meaning finance, the program, or do you need, because I think the next item you asked down here is to get staff and you to talk to renewable funding?
To know exactly what we need to do.
Right, okay.
And to get an overall, get an overall picture of if it would cost the city any money, whether we could roll over all the startup costs into the assessment district. I mean, those are important questions that we'd have to have answered.
So I support number two, so we can get that information. I have no, no problem with that.
Do you also think it's important, though, to present a finalized program?
Yeah, I'm not sure if you're asking us to approve tonight, or just to approve to get the rest of the details, so we know what we're approving.
Yeah, we're not actually adopting the program tonight, because we don't have any of the specific language that would be needed to create the financing district.
I'm fine to get that kind of definition, so we can look at.
Great.
When whoever meets with the finance people, for my sake anyway, it would be helpful to understand, we have zero now, and where the first seed money comes from, and then through the whole process. And if you can ask them, if we're carrying any financial liability for a home that had these improvements at an average of, say, eleven thousand dollars per home, and the owner defaults on the home and doesn't pay us back, let alone paying their lender back, then who ends up with that eleven thousand dollar liability? And they may have already addressed that, but you can make sure they...
You know, I remember looking at the city of Berkeley's final proposal that they just approved, I believe, in September, and they had a, they had an actual opinion from their city attorney and from representatives of their financial department, that showed that there was nearly zero liability risk for the city. They actually were able to document and show to the council when they presented the finalized program, that the city, through this assessment district, would actually be ahead of all other leaning agencies, so they would get their money first.
Yeah, that, that would be important, because I know we have, well, we just had, what, two meetings ago, a whole list of homes we're gonna foreclose on that owe us money, and we're trying to figure out how we could get that money, so it'd be important for me to understand how we're protected from that standpoint, if we're gonna loan them that kind of money. The twenty percent of future developments, so if we're gonna have ten, ten people build quote developments, and that could be five houses to a hundred houses, what I'd still like to do, before we get to a final point, as I mentioned, I'm currently serving as the vice chair of the Climate Change Committee for CACOG, we still have this issue that we're working on, and SMUD has commented on that, it might be more efficient, instead of putting solar panels on twenty houses, to build a solar...
Farm?
Farm is, sounds too big, but think of it as a central unit with distribution to twenty houses, because it's just more cost effective. SMUD could maintenance the whole thing, instead of each homeowner having to maintain it, whoever asked about that. So as we move forward, I'll report back to you what, what we think's gonna occur, anyway. And I think I mentioned that at about the hundred home level, there is a concern that that becomes, under the current regulations, a utility, actually, and they're hoping that there can be language introduced at the state, that it doesn't make it a utility, more like a homeowners association. So I'll, I'll keep your abreast of that. You know, the concern I have is how, how we'll implement which, I think the other question that was brought up, which two of the ten have to do it? And I'm hopeful that that won't be the problem, that three, the five of them will want to do it, and you'll have no problem, so... So I think those are my only, but I think what you're trying to do is a good idea. Certainly, the solar's a good idea. I'm glad the federal government renewed the tax credits. I've been staying in contact with that gentleman, I told you, I talked to with the capital program, and I still, to, one gentleman, I don't see him right now, but about our waste treatment plant, because we can't enjoy the federal tax credits, because they don't apply to us, I still hope there's a third party who can buy, install, and lease back to us the equipment, who can get the credits, and then we can afford to put those panels out at the waste treatment plant or at the police department. So I would still like to look into that. That's it.
All right. Councilman O'Boyle?
Question for Kurt. Let's say we had a fifty home development, a hundred home development, two fifty and five hundred. How would a program like this work to get a twenty percent ratio if we had four developments to come forward?
I think that's one of the issues that needs to be resolved. The way I heard it, it would be just on a development, I think we need to think about, you know, you may have one development with several phases. You know, obviously, a five-unit subdivision is significantly different than a hundred-unit subdivision, so I think you need to look at what the underlying objectives are of the program, and design a program that would fairly allocate participation. So I don't have a specific answer for it, maybe...
Possibly, we could look at doing a development quota, where they would be considered a, an applicable developer, that this mandate would apply to. So we could say if the development was larger than twenty residential units, they would fall under this mandate. That's something that we'll work on with staff.
You may want to look at an exemption for certain sized subdivisions, or you may also may wish to cap it on other subdivisions, I'm not certain. I haven't had a chance to discuss a lot of the details with the mayor as of yet, and I think there are some issues that would need to be addressed and clarified for the benefit of the public as well as council.
What if it was a custom home, I'm sorry, Tim. What if it's just someone building their own custom home, would they...
That wouldn't be considered a residential development, you know, it'd be a single lot, yeah, different.
I like the program proposal, I think it's what we need to do in this country, to move away from foreign oil, foreign gas, and start producing, basically, energy ourselves. So hopefully, in the future, every home is gonna be self-sufficient, not just a percentage, because if we're ever gonna change this country, that has to happen. We can't keep relying on the rest of the world to keep this country going. But it's a start, and I think, it sounds good to me, but I think a lot of questions need to be answered, and we gotta meet with this, this private company and see what they, they can do for us, and address all the issues for multiple developments, things like that. So I'd like to move forward and, and address those issues.
I have a question, when Kurt answered that question, I don't know if we've gotten to this level, but do you have a feel, through Ted or Kurt, whomever, how much of our current building code, and I'm sure there's other people already have these, we could cut and paste from, but how much of this would have to be adopted to, to bring all our building, building codes up to SNF for this implementation?
I don't think the building codes would have to be amended. It's, are you talking on the solar or on the smart homes themselves?
All of it, in other words, so that our inspectors know what to go out and inspect, and I mean, just to implement?
They're, they're pretty, they're pretty knowledgeable. They, there's a continuing education, this is, you know, with SB, or AB, SB thirty-two, I mean, the, the building industry is gearing up for looking at, at higher energy efficiencies, and they've been attending a number of classes, I'm aware of that. So it's a matter of determining the type of product, in the case of air conditioners, it's whatever the measurement is, and I forget what they call it.
Seer?
Seer, seer, you know, seer. So it's looking at what the, what those values are, and do they fall within the range or above the minimum of, to qualify for that particular category, so...
Mr. Mayor, I think another thing that's very important is, is we have a representative from SMUD. SMUD's gonna be the lead in here, because they're the main supplier of electricity, and they're way ahead of us. They have people that are certified and qualified. I think it would even be important, if we have an opportunity, to look at the total subdivision that, that builder did, and look at the, what's happened with it from the time that it was put in. But it may give some benefit to have SMUD give us a presentation on how it came about, what, some of the issues they went through, and how effective it's been, because they already have a subdivision that's operating. Put all those in, and the people were just thrilled to bottom. I guess when they started marketing, and they went, the people were surprised at how fast the buildings went for these types of homes, so...
And I think I mentioned in the last meeting, that I know the fire departments in general still have some issues, and I'd just invite them to get their comments in early, yeah, because it's just, again, like, where do you shut the unit off? Because it's basically always alive, if the sun's out, it's a live unit, and get them in early in the process, so...
Although, another thing to mention that no one's talked about is, is that even when the home's not operating, these solar things will generate electricity, and that there's a revenue stream that comes back to those individuals to help offset their costs, you know, because that photovoltaic, as long as the sun's out, it's operating. And if they're not using it, then that electricity goes back through the meter, and they're given credit for it.
One of the reasons that I really feel like adopting this program is extremely important, I think all of us know and we recognize from what we see on TV, the wheels on our American economy are starting to fall off, and... And cities all across the country are looking for ways to encourage investment in their own communities. You know, we're, we're a long ways away here in the City of Galt from seeing another major residential development, just because the market is at a point where it's just not going to accommodate it. If we really wanna stimulate taxes and we wanna stimulate spending, this is a great opportunity for the City of Galt to encourage investment, construction, development. The efficiency portion of this program, if it is as widely adopted and, and accepted by the community as many of us are expecting it to be, this could stimulate an extremely high amount of construction over the first year of the program. And that could increase business at our local shops, our local restaurants, our delis, all these workers that are brought into the community to do the enhancements. This could have a, an extremely positive tax benefit for the City of Galt. So, that's something that, you know, I should've covered it in the main program, but I didn't. But I think it's important for council to recognize that as well, so. With that, I'd like to look for a, a motion on the program. If council's okay just adopting the program as a whole, instead of piece by piece, just to move forward with renewable funding. Like I said, we're not finalizing the program today. We're just, we're authorizing staff and myself to take the program that I just presented to renewable funding to determine how we move forward in the future.
If I could offer a, an amendment, if you will, or a motion that I think I can adopt, because you can probably guess, I'm not comfortable with the mandatory part of it, but I'm comfortable with the goals you're trying to achieve. So, if we could adopt the, the spirit, if you will, of what you're doing here, without saying every word that's in here, we're adopting as it is worded, because there's other areas where the wording I don't agree with, and I don't wanna waste time tonight on wordsmithing. Adopt the goal you're trying to achieve, authorize your second one, if you wanna put it up there. Authorize you and staff to get with them, and then put up your third one. And direct them to work with our attorney. I'm fine with that. I just, I can't support that we're just carte blanche adopting everything, because for people who don't know, there's a hundred and twenty something pages of words in here. So, I'd rather just adopt it in philosophy than the exact words that are in here for now. Then when you come back with this final information, we can fine tune it. I'm fine with that.
I'm okay with that, too.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Group five zero, and just to clarify, Councilman Clare, that was for all three portions that we just identified. Okay? Thank you. Takes us to Communications, and under Communications, we have Councilman Roboy.
I, I put this under my agenda item on fire sprinklers, and the actual, the exact title is Residential Fire Sprinklers Receive Landslide, Landslide, Landslide Support from the National International Code Council. And I put copies of the information, or the clerk did, on both entryways for the council chambers. And the reason I wanted to put this here is because Galt, just a few months ago, uh, has been, had basically led the country in supporting fire sprinklers for new development. And now, the country is following us. And I wanted to read a few sections of this, um, this press release that came out on this issue. This is called, "The Residential Fire Sprinklers Receive Landslide Support. International Code Council Vote Confirms Need for Life-Saving Technology in New Homes." Voting members of a leading building code body in the nation, the International Code Council overwhelmingly supported a residential fire sprinkler requirement for all new one- and two-family homes and townhouses. The vote, I'm just reading part of it. "The vote held today in Minneapolis was supported by seventy-three percent of the voting members in attendance. Our team worked hard to, to rally support throughout the United States for residential fire sprinkler requirements. Both our supporters deserve the recognition for showing up en masse in Minneapolis," said Ronnie Coleman, president of the I R C Sprinkler Coalition. "They know from experience that sprinklers are the answer to the nation's fire problem." And Ronnie Coleman is the person, Ron Coleman and Steve Hart are the two former fire marshals in the State of California that helped make our ordinance a reality in Galt. Fire deaths in the United States realized a dramatic decline over the past three decades as smoke alarms became common. Today, more than ninety-five percent of homes still have them. Still, more than three thousand people die each year from fire, and a home burns every eighty seconds in America. Residential sprinklers are the only fire protection technology that works to rapidly contain fire, effectively giving families more time to escape the deadly heat and poisonous gases of an unchecked fire. Therefore, the proposal's passage has also pleased home safety advocates across the country. We work with families every day that are directly affected by the ravages of fire. We are thrilled, not only because this moment has taken decades of demanding work to achieve, but because it provides protection for potential victims of future fires. Karen Mann, a fire safety advocate and the mother of fire victims, said in her testimony, "The cost to put fire sprinklers in a home where my daughter died would've been less than what I paid for the flowers for her funeral." The vote was a historic moment in residential fire safety and a significant step in a long journey before sprinklers are installed in every new home. We're now going to move forward at the state and local level to ensure new code requirements are adopted. So, basically, this is stating that by two thousand and eleven throughout the United States, if it passes in all, all the states, uh, fire sprinklers will be mandatory through, through the entire country. And it's something that I worked on here for four years, and it's really nice to see that it's gonna happen for the, for the country. And Ron Coleman has pretty much devoted his life to make this reality, so he, he deserves a great amount of credit for that. And the people of Galt should be proud that, that Galt was kind of the lead on this, and, uh, the rest of the country's following us. That was it.
That takes us, does anyone else have anything under Communications before we move forward? Okay. Takes us under the regular calendar to item I one, which is the Galt Place Mixed Use and Affordable Housing Project. At this time, I'll turn it over to Kurt Champion.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the audience. Uh, the item for you tonight is the Galt Place Mixed Use and Affordable Senior Housing Project. This item, uh, here before the council back in February of this year, at which time the council unanimously uh, supported, uh, approval and support of this project. Um, as you recall, this is an eighty-one unit senior affordable project, first floor, commercial, nice mixed use, uh, at the corner of Fourth and B in Old Town. Um, the developer, uh, Cyrus Yosefi, and, and others, uh, came forward. They made a presentation, we had the elevations. All of that remains essentially the same. Uh, also, it did receive, uh, approval of the use permit in March of this year, so the project has all entitlements and is ready to go forward. At that time, the applicant, uh, based on the financing, had requested the city redevelopment agency provide a loan in the amount of two and a half million dollars. Council fully supported that. The city, the city itself agreed to lend to the, uh, agency about one point two million dollars from various funds, and then the agency would be repaying the city. That was part of the financing package at that time. Um, in April of this year, the, uh, California Tax Credit Allocation Committee met, and the, uh, project, Galt Place, uh, did not receive funding at the C T C in the first round. That was the first round. Uh, subsequent to that, uh, and due to timing, we met with the applicant. We didn't have time to really do any adjustments with regards to the financing. We made some minor adjustments to the seat, to the site plan, and reduced some of the commercial on the first floor. The, the Tax, uh, Tax Credit Allocation Board looks at, uh, affordable housing as the first priority. So, anytime you have a mixed use, it reduces your competitiveness in the nature of all other projects, assuming that they are all residential. Um, they resubmitted the application, and we learned October first of this year that we did not, uh, that the project did not get funded. However, it is first on the waitlist, uh, meaning that the other projects, and I, I don't have the number of other projects that were approved in the first round and the second round for this type of project. If any one of those does in fact fall out, then Galt Place would be in position to be a funded project, uh, under this allocation or this round. Um, the, the applicant, uh, Mr. Yosefi, has, uh, was successful in getting a, another project uh, in Southern California approved in the first round. He's willing, and I'll let him talk a little bit more about this. He's willing to forego the tax credits on that project in order to move Galt Place into, uh, a funding positions with the Tax Credit Allocation Board for the second round. So, I'll let him talk a little bit more about that later. However, as indicated in the report, and, uh, considering the fiscal markets, there has been some changes, and they have come back to request additional consideration in terms of funding. Uh, the, in, in the first round of allocation, they assumed that the tax credits would be worth about ninety cents on the dollar. Uh, in the current market, they're estimating about eighty-two cents on the dollar, which is a reduction in the availability of funds that they will be able to receive from the sale of those tax credits that they received. Therefore, there is a shortfall in the overall funding project. They have, uh, requested that the city, and this has all been kind of short notice. When we got the list, we found out, then to get it agendized, meet with the app, or get, meet with the applicant, and then get it agendized. Um, but they are looking to, uh, for an additional one point five million dollars. That would be in the form of a loan, um, from the, uh, redevelopment agency. We would look similarly to the, um, uh, and, and that, that loan would be in the form of deferring the impact fees that would be due to the city otherwise as part of the project. Uh, total fees due on the project are about two point four five million. A portion of those fees or the balance would be paid. The, the city would then look to loan monies to the agency, and then the agency would repay the city in the short term for the funds that were loaned. The one point five million and the original two and a half million would then be repaid over the term of the project, starting in year sixteen. The developer, uh, would then start repaying the city at that time on the four million dollars.
Kurt?
Yes.
Stop. Okay, so, you're, what you're saying is, we're going to lend them money?
Correct.
And, uh, they're gonna pay it back by us deferring fees?
No.
Okay.
The, the loan would be in the form of fee deferrals.
Okay.
Um, and we, we would use city funds to, to advance to the city, to the redevelopment agency for purposes of monies that they would need upfront for, say, purchase of the property. They would like to close on the property by the end of the year. We would front that, those monies. There would be a loan between the city and the agency. The agency would repay the city, those funds, over a period of ten years, as set forth in the report, uh, at the late interest rate. Uh, so, the city would be made whole. And then, the developer would be repaying the redevelopment agency for the same amount over the life of the project from proceeds generated from the project, and that would start in year sixteen.
So, when you say the agency is gonna repay the city, are you talking about the redevelopment agency?
Yes, redevelopment agency.
How are we assured that we're gonna have that money in the redevelopment fund? To repay the city?
Based on the projections, assuming that the agency continues in existence, um, we believe that that could easily be achieved.
Thank you.
I know that's a lot of information all at once, uh, and maybe somewhat confusing. I, uh, Mr. Yosefi's in the audience, as well as Pat Sablehouse, who does a lot of the fiscal work for, does all the fiscal work for, uh, C, uh, C Y Development.
Kurt, you said, uh, it wouldn't start re, repaying until, uh, the sixteenth year?
Sixteenth year.
Do we have any rate of return built into that, interest?
Three percent.
Three percent, okay.
Why is that, uh, necessary to go from twelve to sixteen? Just because of the amount of the monies, the loans?
Uh, uh, and I don't know all of the specifics, but under the, the tax credit allocation, there is a, a fee that is, has to be repaid to the developer through the proceeds of the development. I mean, that's, and maybe I'll have Mr. Sablehouse, maybe you can explain that a little bit better. This, this individual's an expert in this, I am not.
Sure, Kurt, put me on the hot plate.
Yes, yes.
But what, what is, Mr. Champion is referring to is the, the original, um, uh, budget for this project, uh, which is a total of about twenty million dollars. And in that is a, a development fee that, uh, that is allowed by the Tax Credit Committee that's paid to the developer for, for doing the project, uh, his, his profit, uh, margin in it. And, and that was about a million, uh, nine hundred thousand dollars. And it's, is today still projected to be a million nine hundred thousand, is allowed by the credit committee. And there, there's not enough money to do that. He, he can't pay himself the development fee, because the sources of money are not adequate to do it. So, he has to defer, uh, be, not, not be paid that money, about a million, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand, I think it was, Kurt. And, and he, so, the money is just not there to pay it. So, he basically has to, to, to loan the, the, the project, this, this deferred developer fee, and it will get paid over a period of fifteen years from the cash flow that's generated by the, the rents and the retail income on the project. And I R S says that if you're going to do this, you must pay that amount over the fifteen-year period, uh, or they will declare that, that it was not a real loan to begin with, and they would take back and recapture some of the tax credits on the, on the project. And, and the reason that, that Kurt was emphasizing, uh, that, that I R S requires this is because it, it's, it's one of those, uh, tax issues that scares everybody. And so, when you, when you do defer a development fee, or a piece of the development fee, the million four hundred thousand, you, you have to do projections that you think are realistic, and how it's gonna be repaid over that period of fifteen years. And if it's repaid sooner than that, because you will get an audit report each and every year on this project, if it's repaid sooner than that, then, then the redevelopment agency would be, uh, would, would start its repayment from the project. The project would start repaying the loan from the city of, of Galt and from the redevelopment agency of Galt sooner than, than the sixteenth year that we're projecting right now.
What happens if they don't make it in the fifteen years? Something happens, and it takes sixteen or seventeen, or even eighteen years?
In the fifteenth, if it's not paid off in the fifteenth year, uh, then the requirement from I R S is that the developer has to, 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 to pay himself off and get it off the books of the partnership.
Okay, so, then, so regardless, the sixteen year, we'll start to see the repayment of it?
That's right, exactly, yeah.
What if the developer can't afford to pay for it at that time?
Uh, then the I R S will come in, uh, in, uh, and tax him, will nick him. Uh, don't mess with Mother I R S, I think they say.
Uh, in the nutshell, it comes down to, it's about a one point five million dollar increase to the project, is what would be requested. Um, this just generally outlines what would have to be, what would lies in agreement, and bring the agreement back to the council. And, um, again, getting back to timing, we did not have time to put it into a formal agreement. I believe it was on October twenty-eighth or the thirty-first that you get a final decision on-
October the thirty-first, at five o'clock, uh, will be the final decision on, on the tax credits available to the, to the City of Galt. But as you said earlier to the council, uh, Mr. Yosefi has credits on the, on the project Mojave, uh, which we could transfer over to the City of Galt, and I think that C F Y is, is committed, uh, to do that if we don't get picked up off the waiting list.
If someone else does, fails to, like I was saying earlier, then he would work at this project. So, this project-
So, if everything was approved, then when would you anticipate starting the project?
Uh, I think Mr. Yosefi, uh, talked with the redevelopment agency, uh, staff, Kurt, about wanting to take down the land, uh, in, uh, late November or December, uh, with the city loan, so that we would actually close on the city financing. And, and construction then, uh, given how, how, how much time is involved in, in finalizing the working drawings, uh, the architectural drawings, uh, construction would start in, uh, in the spring of two thousand and nine, April or May of two thousand and nine, whenever the weather would, would permit.
Kurt, do we have, uh, necessary accommodations for our, from our sewer plant for this project? Um, and services for it?
At the sewer plant, yes, yeah.
What about services to the site?
My understanding, in talking with Public Works, they've looked at it, and it can be serviced.
Can be, or is ready to be, is it ready?
There's existing lines.
Okay, that's what I meant.
I mean, they would have to do storm, you know, curb gutter side walk, street improvements around the site, and accommodate, and, you know, directed drainage and so forth, and do those improvements, but yes.
Kurt, did I read in the report that the commercial is gonna be reduced?
We did reduce it somewhat. I don't recall, I think it went from about ten thousand square feet to about seventy-five hundred, maybe eight thousand, something like that. I think that's about, that's correct.
So, is that, say, one small store area? Eight thousand, that's quite a bit.
Actually, the storefront, I believe, is still all commercial on the first floor. What they did is they narrowed up the depth of the, of the, uh, of the buildings, how far back they go into the parking structure, which is the first floor. Because if, you recall, it's, it's, uh, indoor parking on the first floor, and then you'd have access to the backs of those, uh, businesses from inside the parking garage, as well as the outside.
Uh, what happens if, say, a year from now, our redevelopment agency disappears?
That wouldn't be good.
What would happen?
Well, I don't- Well, I don't know that the agency would disappear one year from now. I think that decision should probably be made, well, hopefully sooner. Um, we would have to look at, and this assumes, again, and as we indicated in the first meeting, this assumes that the agency, that we have an extension, and that the amended plan moves forward. Uh, we would need to probably talk a little bit more about that specific question.
Because obviously, we're not positive about that issue.
Correct.
So how can we approve this if we're not positive about that issue?
Well, if we were to approve it in concept, obviously, we would have to meet with the applicant, uh, disclose those issues, um, and take necessary precautions on the part of the city as well.
I think part of it, too, is we have some of the funds already available. A good chunk of the original loan, I think one point three million of it, was money that we already had in the bank. So we're gonna continue to get tax increment this year and the next year. So a big chunk of that- that loan, regardless of what happens with the redevelopment, will be available. The remaining part of it is through deferred impact fees. So to the extent that we won't be able to pay ourselves back from the RDA for those deferred impact fees, there would be an impact, but we still have, it wouldn't be necessarily, um, money that we're taking out of various accounts to pay for this loan. It would just be that we wouldn't be getting those impact fees upfront to the extent that we thought we were. So essentially, what we're doing is deferring some of those impact fees. So it would be a-
These would- when they come in, do they have to stay in every development area, or they can be used for the whole city?
The impact fees?
Yeah.
Yeah, they can be used for any eligible project.
Kurt, there's a- there's another question I think the council needs to ask themselves as to why you would wanna do this. And for the senior housing, for those that are lower income, the benefit that we're getting here is we're getting eighty-one units, as opposed to doing single family that would- would not house that much. So the question you have to ask is if there's enough need in the community to where this would be something that you would want to do for those seniors that, uh, have a hard time finding a place to live and be able to pay for it. So the beauty of it is, is you get eighty-one units at one time, which would affect a lot of people.
There's definitely a need to that, I mean-
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, there's- and there's also a production requirement under the amended redevelopment plan that you provide affordable housing. This would take care of a big chunk, if not all of that requirement.
Would this take care of the low-low, or the medium-low, or?
Well, it would address two things. One, that- that deals more with the housing element side. I'm just dealing strictly with the redevelopment agency housing production requirement. Um, and it would satisfy a good portion of that on the- on the redevelopment side. It would also address, uh, the city's regional, uh, allocation, uh, for your low and very low, because most of these are below fifty percent, uh, median income, is that correct? I don't think anything's above fifty percent, is it?
It- that is correct.
That's correct, yeah. So this is the very, very low.
I mean, it is a great project, I said it before, and I'll say it again, it's just, um, it's a lot of money we're looking at, so.
I think the other thing on the project, particularly if the redevelopment agency moves forward, is this project isn't the redevelopment agency, which means all of the tax increment generated on a twenty million dollar project goes back into the agency. So we're talking about major revenue source redevelopment agency going forward, notwithstanding any of the other repayments.
It's a nonprofit, therefore, there is no tax increment.
Well, there is on the commercial-
On the commercial portion.
On the commercial portion of it.
On the commercial portion.
So whatever- whatever percentage that is. Um, not- not- and also, the other big benefit is the- the fact that it's gonna contribute, you know, a large amount to the old town, something that the council's been very interested in, is seeing that whole area redeveloped and bring some new business down there, and new tenants, um, something we haven't seen in a long time. So in addition to the housing production, you have that jumpstart for future other- other additional projects in that area.
How will we secure the loan?
Uh, with deed of trust.
So they'll have an insurity that will guarantee the loan, or?
I'd have to look back at the original agreement and see how that is- how that is, uh, characterized.
Well, it would be the- the loan, well, majority of the loan amount would be, once the project is completed, so that it would be- it would be against the property itself.
Right.
But would there be initial amount that- that Mr. Yosefi has indicated that he would personally guarantee that two million dollar initial loan?
And- and with a deed of trust-
And with deed of trust.
-with the property during that interim period, Mr. Councilman.
I think that would be the most important thing for us, anyway, to- to move forward with this, is to understand how that will be assured in the case of anything going wrong, so.
Any other questions before we get to public comment?
Did we have to do an EIR on this project?
Uh, as I recall, it was exempt under CEQA. Um, there was an exemption available for this, because it's an infill project, and it is affordable.
And you- you don't see any problems with that at all?
No, it's a vacant lot, there's, you know, a mechanic shop on site, and there's no critters. I mean, it's paved and gravelled, and it's not a whole lot to it.
But even for the size that you- you- there's not an EIR required?
No, no. No, this project is fully entitled at this point.
All right, thank you. You have one speaker sheet, uh, Tom Santillan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members, for the time to speak. I would like to encourage you to help CLF Development to help obtain the funding for Galt Place. This part- this type of project is exactly what we need in the city of Galt. It will bring much needed, not a lot, but some retail and commercial business and jobs. And it's also gonna bring some affordable housing to seniors on fixed income. The- the commercial's gonna be on the first, you probably already know this, but for the mem- people in the audience, they may not know that, and, um, the housing on the upper levels. I've known Mr. Yosefi for about eight years now, and I've had the privilege of working on some of his projects. His projects are of quality workmanship, architecture design, and use of land. If you have an opportunity within the next couple of weeks or whatever, I would encourage you to go to the Globe Mill project, I believe it's at Twelfth and C, okay, downtown Sacramento. So you can see for yourself the kind of housing that he's talking about, okay? We need this kind of project here. Let's help them out, so they can help our city with some of our needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments by council?
Well, I wanna say that, uh, I was always impressed, I was impressed with your, uh, project when you first brought it to us. Um, sounds like we get a lot of questions answered regarding, you know, the return and the financing and the security of- on that issue. Um, brings two things to the community that just come right off the top of my head that we dearly need. One is affordable housing for our seniors, which is very important to me. Um, the other one is retail, which you hear us constantly talking about all the time. Eight thousand square feet i- is quite a bit, especially if you're coming in on the west side, which is an area which we've worked- been working very hard to develop and improve. And your project helps us jumpstart that quite well, and, uh, it's very impressive. And I- and again, jobs with this economy, as hard as it's getting, that's another key to your success and to ours. So I welcome your project, I welcome the revenue it's going to be bringing to this community, and I support you wholeheartedly, and I thank you for bringing that project to our- to us.
Councilwoman Payne?
Have no further comments.
My- my concerns were just, obviously, that we're protecting our investment, but we also are glad to partner with you in an investment in the future of our downtown, and I think probably the core of revitalizing the downtown. And, uh, in case you folks are gonna leave right after this issue, I was gonna announce at the end, so let's let you know that the thirtieth of October in downtown Sacramento, um, I'm on the rail commission for San Mateen Valley, and we're having our quarterly meeting there. Um, but one of the things I think you're aware of, we're working on, is the potential of a commuter train that would run right up that line to Sacramento and have a stop across the street from your development. So you may just wanna keep an ear out as that progress, uh, hopefully goes along. But if you wanna attend our quarterly meeting, it'll be on the thirtieth in Sacramento, and I can give you details, so.
Councilwoman Raboy?
Uh, just once again, this is a great project, it's really gonna help downtown. It's gonna bring in, uh, affordable housing for seniors, which is really important in this community. And, um, my questions are answered, so I'm ready to move forward.
Great. The only comment that I wanted to make is, uh, it is definitely a substantial investment for the city of Galt to be making through its redevelopment agency. But I think the five of us have recognized from the beginning, when this project was brought forward, that this is more than just an affordable senior housing mixed-use project. It is going to be the catalyst of our old town redevelopment. This is going to be the one project, ten years from now, that we- we look back and say, this started the redevelopment of our old town shopping district. So I'm glad that it's still alive, and I'm glad that setbacks haven't kept the project from moving forward. And I'm happy to do whatever the city can do to make sure that the project gets completed. So be happy to entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I approve five zero. This time we'll adjourn and reconvene to the redevelopment agency. Roll call.
Payne?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Claire?
Here.
Raboy?
Here.
Meredith?
Here. Other comment?
Before you leave, if I may interrupt, if this means your property is gonna be purchased for the end of the year, I still need to get my van serviced, so, all right.
Public comment?
Motion to approve.
Public comment? It'd be interesting.
Nobody said anything.
Information consent calendar? Motion to approve?
Yes.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye, approve four zero. Item four, recommendation that the board of directors approve the consent calendar, we cover that. Departmental reports, Community Development Department, and this is a follow-up to the Galt Place mixed-use and affordable housing project. Hand it over to Kurt.
Yeah, we're just be getting, uh, I'll dispense with the staff report, but it's getting the redevelopment agency approval to proceed, uh, with this project as well, because we'll have to have agreements between the city and the agency.
Any comments, or do we have a motion? So move.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye, approve four zero. This time we'll adjourn and reconvene to the Galt City Council. City clerks report.
The Galt Beautification Committee appointments, the recommendation is that Councilmember Raboy and council make appointments to the Galt Beautification Committee.
Yes, and I'd like to appoint Maria Satima Lopez.
Is that Maria sitting in our-
I think it is.
Audience?
Thank you for applying.
The alternate.
Do we have a motion on the alternate position?
It's here.
Does anyone here tonight that applied as an alternate, or- or a full position on the committee? Thank you for applying. Do we have a recommendation from council on the alternate position?
Or the suggestion Tim, or?
No.
I don't know any individuals.
Barbara, do you have a recommendation?
I was about to ask Evelyn that. Have you, um, talked to any of these people, Evelyn, or do you have a suggestion?
For the alternate?
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, we have, uh, Lois Grant has applied. Okay, we also have Stephanie Zimmerman. And then we also have Vicki Johnson. I think that- We've had their letters of interest here. You said you- you knew the first individual best? Lois, she's really interested. Okay. Do we have a motion to, uh, recommend Lois Grant as the alternate?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, approve four zero. Rest of the city clerks report?
I have the calendar of city meetings and events. Um, the next city coun- or actually, the City Council Youth Committee meeting is November third. The city council meeting will be, uh, Tuesday, November fourth, election night. Uh, there's the Upgrade Oversight Committee meeting on November eleventh. The city offices will be closed on Veterans Day, November eleventh. Parks and Rec Commission meeting is on November twelfth. There's a Park Master Plan update, ADHOP Committee meeting on November twelfth as well. A Planning Commission meeting meets on November thirteenth, and then another, a city council meeting on November eighteenth. Beautification Committee on the- November twentieth, and the Committee on Aging meets on November twenty-seventh. Our offices will be closed for two days for Thanksgiving on the twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth.
Comments by staff?
Uh, Mr. Halliday has a comment, and I need to update the council on an issue.
Uh, just wanna correct the calendar. The Oversight Committee meeting is scheduled for November eleventh, that being holiday. We're not determined whether we're going to have a meeting that night, we may have it the previous Monday. Uh, but we'll make an announcement for that. Also, not yet added to the calendar, on, uh, November sixth, Thursday, we do have a ZM transit needs hearing here at five thirty. And then last night, we had a meeting with citizens to unroll our water treatmentation program and discuss the proposed rate increases that will be coming as a result of that. It was not well attended, unfortunately, but those that did attend asked some great questions, and we're hoping to take their feedback, finish report, and bring it to council, uh, probably in early December.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we had an unfortunate accident out at the police department on Monday. Uh, the north electronic gate was, uh, taken out by an automobile. No one was hurt, and I just want you to know, if you got there and see, it's gonna take some time to assess how we're gonna fix it, what we're gonna do.
Is it one of our patrol cars?
Uh, it was a patrol car, but it was not a police patrol car. I don't wanna say anymore about that, I don't wanna embarrass the individual.
Okay.
But it was, uh, everything turned out all right, we're just thankful that no one was hurt.
Okay. No more comments by staff? Move to comments by council, Vice Mayor Haynes.
Um, I have no comments tonight.
Councilwoman Payne?
Uh, well, once again, we have on our agenda Mrs. Breck, did I say that correctly? And her fence. Did you want to come up and say something first about it? Go ahead, it's okay with me, anyway.
I'm gonna have to start pulling my pants up pretty soon, 'cause I feel like I'm up here talking about this stuff, and the water's rising rapidly around me. No, um, it's her fence, so what's the verdict?
Do we need to, do I need to refresh your-
Not for me.
No, you don't need to go over it. We- we took a tour with Kurt, and, uh, we gotta do something to resolve this problem.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm so glad, it looks like we maybe made- made a good buy since you guys just approved that, uh, there for, uh-
You don't need a couple million dollars, right? You just want a fence.
Maybe, yeah, that's right, that's right.
I wanna thank Kurt for taking this, uh, the ride-along, uh, the drive-along, uh, and looking around your neighborhood. It's real important, especially for me, because I was- it wasn't just your fence I was concerned with. I wanted to get a glimpse of the whole area and comparisons, and, uh, because it really did make a difference. So I- I have no problem with moving forward with your request, and I appreciate your patience very much.
I think Kurt has some ideas of how we can do it.
Yeah.
I had already talked to the city attorney's office, and actually, I think, Steve, you sent me something, uh, a while ago, uh, a draft. And if you recall in the memo, I- I think I sent to Ted, and I think ultimately, council got it. There were several alternatives. I think if you look towards the end of the memo, it talks about amending the zoning code, and I think that's the only way that this- that this issue can really be accomplished. Um, and what we'll end up doing is identifying a geographic area, uh, in the older part of town and come up with special regulations as it relates to placement of fences. Um, and we'll also have to look at, uh, you know, some of these will be right at right-of-way line. I still think that you'll want to maintain a, uh, some- some landscape median there, and certainly accommodate the four-foot sidewalks. You don't want your fences right at the back of a four-foot fi- four-foot sidewalk, where the pedestrian has nowhere to go, uh, you know, in- in the case of a vehicle or- or something threatening them. So I think it- it can be reasonably accommodated, it will take time. This will require public hearings before the Planning Commission, as well as the city council, because it is a code amendment, so it is going to take a little bit of time, but we can, there is a process, and we can get it done.
Is there any way that we can let her move forward now without making those changes?
Not legally.
Not legally, or not without the council authorizing?
Violation of the ordinance.
Council can authorize it. Violation of the law.
What are you saying, what we don't know-
What she does on her own, we can't just tell her.
We defer that to the city attorney. Is there any possible way that we can allow her to move forward with her fence before making the changes that would require public hearings in front of the Planning Commission and the city council?
Um, no, sir. No, sir. It's, you currently have a zoning code requirement and we can start the process to make that, to make the change to the code. But I do not know a way to authorize it in light of the existing code amendment, so. And if somebody violates the code before it's changing, there's nothing that compels the city to make, take that enforcement action. But there's a difference between not enforcing the code and authorizing it prior to the time that you have an amendment.
Right.
Okay, so what you guys don't know won't hurt me.
Kurt, what is the timeframe? You say we have to have a public hearing. Okay, if we say let's get on it tomorrow, what?
Well, okay, that's.
Tell me what we have to do.
I can do it tomorrow.
Okay, so what do we have to do?
Uh, we've got to develop the code or develop the ordinance, lay out the geographic area. We're going to have to spend a little time figuring exactly, okay, what roads should be affected by this and, you know, where it makes most sense. Prepare the staff report, do the notice, that's a two-week period right there, just to get before the commission. Then the commission has to take an action and we have to re-notice it again, just to get back before the council, because there was a court case here last year where we can't do double notices, so it costs us more in both time and money. So you're talking two, three months at least.
Wow.
That's just, that's just, those are minimum timeframes just to get to public hearing.
Just right for spring construction.
Exactly.
You know, the sad thing not to cause anybody any trouble is there are other fences that we have pictures of in the same area where they didn't take time to ask the city's admissions.
And you're absolutely right, and that is what I pointed out to Mr. Councilman Raboy and Haynes, is that, you know, looking at the whole of the area, I think it will resolve, and we will still have illegal fences out there, even with this change. But it'll maybe bring a lot of them into compliance.
But we haven't enforced it on the others, so, am I correct? So we haven't pushed any enforcement.
If we catch them building at sidewalk or something, yeah.
Yeah, at the sidewalk, yeah.
But there are existing, yeah, I know exactly what yours is, yeah.
And we do have, on Elm Street, we have a sound wall that's right behind the south.
Part of subdivision improvements and there's a distinction in the code where it relates to masonry walls and architectural features versus fences. And you're right, though, it doesn't, that doesn't work good either. And that was the first and the only one that we ever did like that. That was before we changed the code. So now the code, when you have that, you'll notice now you've got separate, you've got landscaping between a wall and the sidewalk. So that was, that could be early nineties, late eighties, actually. And that was approved.
Well, we did the best we could.
Yeah, and we do plan on landscaping it too.
Good.
And we won't let you see us building at the sidewalk.
We will. I'm not sure, we may have to address, because if they're landscaped, that is in city right-of-way. So we'll, and I'll have to talk to the attorney and figure out how we want to approach that, because if people put irrigation on city property, I'm not sure how we, how we will resolve that issue.
Well, you know, it's been there though for a long time already, the sprinklers are already in there.
Understand.
Outside the fence area, so really, that area still will be, have to be kept up.
Yeah.
Even though that's city property, but it does have sprinklers, so the homeowner's watering it, right, and taking care of it and being nice?
It doesn't matter. Common fence does not prevail.
Common fence is not so common.
I'm seeing.
Right.
Yeah, all right, I understand, I do understand, but you're, you know, you're going to get to it. Yeah, I hate people going by, my son has, I hate to see the kids going by, oh, no dude, that dog almost bit you. It's a little funny, it's a nice dog, but it's, it gets to be a little, yeah.
All right, so.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming and.
No, I don't think that's come back in here.
Oh, no.
No. Unless you want to.
Yeah, we're glad, we're delighted, I enjoy it and I really think that it's really, the city owes you an awful lot. I can't wait for, you know, other changes to come along and have the train come through town.
Oh, wow.
My dad lives in Springfield, we lived in Amtrak for many, many years. And he goes around Amtrak and rode these rails up here and you might have a stop and maybe it's with a coffee up there or, you know, and close to seniors to get on the train and go and, and you too. So thanks for.
Thank you, thank you.
I think we share your vision.
Any further comments, Councilwoman Payne?
Nope, that's it, thank you very much.
Councilman Claire?
Do we have to vote on that?
No.
Uh, no, I think I mentioned the rail meeting. The only thing I will reiterate to what Greg mentioned is that unmet transit needs, and I think Tim, you mentioned about the need for an express bus and that is what this meeting is for. SECOG holds this and quite frankly, we typically have three people attend and one is usually a representative of CTC and then just, I mean, that's just been the attendance, we get one or two people. So, so if you show up, you'll have twenty-five percent of the comments that'll go into SECOG this too. But seriously, if you want anything that has to do with transit, this is what that meeting is for. Please come and tell us whatever it might be and as I said, Councilmember Raboy said, one thing he'd like to see is an express bus of some kind that would take commuters into the downtown Sacramento workplace.
In Stockton.
In Stockton.
When is the meeting? Does that mean I have to show up?
Well, it'd be good.
But just putting you on the spot, so you got to do it now.
When is the meeting?
To repeat, it is on Thursday, November sixth at five thirty PM and I will be hosting the meeting on behalf of SECOG.
Daryl, I wanted to say, we had the meeting, was it last night, night before last, on the water meter?
Last night.
Was it just last night? And we had, what, five citizens, do you think?
Six.
Six citizens, so, yeah, that's the way it goes.
Councilman Raboy?
Just wanted to cover the police grid number nineteen. Actually, there's a lot of crime in this grid. Burglaries, fourteen in the last year. Burglary autos, twelve. Stolen vehicles, eight. Fats, twenty-five, vandalism, seventy-five. This is probably one of the worst I've seen. Does the police officer want to make some comments on this for the public?
The lieutenant.
Yes, lieutenant.
I asked the chief of our team if there is anything you need to be aware of for a meeting, and he says, no, pretty much everything's on consent. He says that, uh, Councilman Raboy will ask about one of the kids. Says he's never asked me anything in two years about this specific, so I don't have to worry about it. Uh, you know, but I did pull my map and I did look at grid nineteen. Uh, grid nineteen is, is, it's right there, um, west of Lincoln and across from the street from the high school. And it takes in a lot of area down there and it's a lot of the older residential neighborhoods down there. So we do have, I'm not sure of all the numbers and I'm not sure how accurate the numbers are. Are you getting those off the website?
Yeah, right off your grid report.
Yeah, and I'm not sure how, when it was updated, I asked our IT director about that and he says that it hasn't been updated. He told me for about five or six weeks, so I'm not sure how current the numbers are. But we do have, we do have, um, some issues down there, not a whole bunch.
So is most of this from the high school then?
Well, coming across the street from the high school, that would, that would account for some of it. We have the parks down there, we have, I think Oak Park is in that area down there and we're having a lot of problems down there. Some problems we were having in the, in that Spruce Street area. But I think we've resolved a lot of those issues. Spruce Street, we put a lot of enforcement into that area and we've resolved a lot of those issues that we were having down there. The park, the Lions, uh, Oak Park down there. We've, you know, been pretty proactive in that area, so we've been able to curtail a lot of the issues down there too, so.
So the burglaries, those are home burglaries and when it's just burglary, that's a home burglary?
Um, we have auto burgs, residential burgs and commercial burgs. So commercial probably isn't going to apply in that area, I'm not sure what number you're talking about, but.
Because that's a ton, fourteen, fourteen home burglaries.
For the year.
For the year?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, and is it auto burgs or just a burglary?
Auto is twelve.
Okay.
Burglaries fourteen.
At Lions Oak Park, we had placed the gate in there about a year, year and a half ago.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, separating from Lions Gate, uh, from Lions Oak, where the kids would have a pathway to pick up the bus. Uh, where we had a, you know, where they would pick it up in front of Lions Oak Park.
Right, it goes into the neighborhood, yeah.
Yeah. Are we still closing that gate at night or are we leaving it open permanently now?
As far as I know, they're, Parks and Rec is closing that gate in evenings. I don't know, I know that was the agreement, I don't know any different.
Okay.
But, I mean, boys isn't here.
Well, I'll check with him tomorrow on that, I was just curious. Because I know one of the issues was, is that a lot of the kids were trafficking back and forth, it was a problem, someone were committing crimes.
Right.
Using that as an escape route.
Yeah, and they're cutting back to that neighborhood.
Okay, I'll check with him on that tomorrow.
Just a point of interest, I had a relative that had a vehicle stolen in Galt and when they found the person, they pulled this person over. They had written all, on, over all the seats with black marker. They had, um, it was only stolen for a couple of days and the entire car was filled up with diapers and, um, children's stuff from school. It was like they had just taken over this car for their own and were living in it. And they also found two big gallons of gasoline as if they were going to torch it soon before they, um, before they got caught. And I've had a heck of a time trying to follow this person through the court system and get personal information on this person. And it's amazing how the criminals are protected more than the victims. So that needs to change in this country.
Is that all you've got?
That's it.
The only comment I wanted to make is just to remind everyone that the upcoming election at the federal and the state level, extremely important, as I said before. I think our economy is as close to an absolute collapse as it was during the Great Depression. So this is an extremely important election for this country. It's going to determine a lot of how the country moves forward during this economic crisis. So it's really important that everybody gets out there and votes. So with that, we'll adjourn.